Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Grab this. Our August 26, 2024 meeting is called to order. Let me say something about the millage rate? The millage rate, do I need to just have it on there?
Okay.
All right, gotcha. All right, so we, um, we're gonna have invocation by yours truly, and then we have pledge of allegiance, pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Christopher P T. What we all stand for, prayer and pledge. Before we pray tonight, I want to ask that you all would join myself and the council in a moment of silence to honor the memory of nine-year utility department employee Mike LaCass. Thank you, let us pray. Dear God, we stand before you tonight with humility, gratitude, and a feeling of unworthiness. When we think of your many great works, including creation and redemption, there's a feeling that we simply don't deserve you. Yet, despite our shortcomings, you still allow us to live on earth, which is exclusively yours. As we are here tonight at another council meeting, we ask that you will not only guide our decision-making, but that you guard our city as we are entering the busy portion of our calendar. Bless and protect in every way residents and visitors who will participate in the many festivals happening in our town. Be with the organizers and law enforcement, both as final details are being decided on. Lastly, I sincerely ask that you hold in your hand the family of Mr. Mike LaCass. Without a doubt, death is a hard reality to deal with. I ask that you would comfort and provide for his lovely wife and their two children from now on until they meet again. These blessings we ask in your son Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in reciting the pledge. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman P T, for leading us in the pledge. Want to remind us to please take a moment to silence your cell phones during this meeting. The City Council encourages public participation. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. However, this time limit may be reduced if there are numerous speakers on a particular item. To ensure efficient proceedings, all persons addressing the City Council shall state their name and shall speak in a civil and courteous manner. Speakers shall address the agenda topic only to which they are speaking on and shall not be repetitive. Members of the audience, please respect the rights of others and refrain from creating noise or other disturbances so as to disrupt or disturb persons who are addressing the City Council, council members who are speaking, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting. Again, thank you for adhering to those instructions. Right next, on the agenda, we have the reading and approval of the minutes from our most recent meeting on August 12, 2024.
May I would like to make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of August 12, 2024, and that be a domino that's recorded?
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any comment about this particular motion? All right, seeing now, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
I'm sorry, excuse me. I've got a new program here I'm working. Eli?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. All right, next, on the agenda, we have some special guests that we'd like to physically present to the audience. I say that because this is their first council meeting here with us in the flesh. And so, very honored and happy to welcome Brent Merchant and Jane Raffel here to the City of Natchitoches Council Meeting. So, um, you know them, they're with Merchant McIntyre. And so, Brent, I think all of us on the council have seen them, met them in person through the Christmas Fest, or met Brent, that is. This is our first time meeting Jane in person for many of us. But Brent and Jane, whenever you address in the microphone, just start out by stating your first and last name and get to whatever presentation you have for us today.
Thank you, sir. Brent Merchant, Merchant McIntyre. We're based in Washington, D.C., but I'm proud to say that when I come to Natchitoches at this point, I don't need Google Maps. I wear the pen, and we're proud to represent the city in Washington. The council has made a decision to invest in Merchant McIntyre that we take very seriously. These are important tax dollars and investments that you make in us as we advocate before decision-makers in D.C. on Capitol Hill and with federal agencies that can or grant dollars to the projects, the impact, those you serve, the residents and the people here in Natchitoches that need the funding. We're proud to represent you and the city, D.C., and before those officials. We are also proud that since 2021, based on a strong partnership with professionals here in the city who also know what they're doing and have a particular set of skills and leaders on the council who have represented the city and D.C. as well, that we've achieved a 60 to 1 return on investment for the city.
Wow.
Awesome. While we are proud of that return, we're not done yet, far from it. We have critical projects and priorities that the city and its residents need funding to achieve upward mobility, economic achievement, and the very priorities that the council has identified. Our return investment specifically, as I think many here in the room know, are built on really four projects to this point. The $17.2 million raise grant, the $280,000 Safe Streets and Roads for All grant, a $150,000 National Endowment for the Arts, and a grant that I'll let Jane speak about, the newest member of the Merchant McIntyre team. Make sure you say her name.
Jane Raffel, thank you guys for having me. So, most recently, we just won a $57,000 fire safety and prevention grant. I worked with Chief Nguyen and Cory Leo down at the station, and this is going to help fund and mobilize the fire prevention curriculum. So, we're gonna get an Ash the Alligator costume. We're going to get a fire prevention trailer and some safety tools such as a fire extinguisher system. And all this is gonna be used to help promote the fire safety and prevention curriculum throughout the city. So, I'm really excited about that.
Great.
All right. Awesome.
The mayor and the team have been quite clear with us and the Merchant McIntyre team about the key priorities we must see funded moving forward. And we're committed to those grant applications, those applications through congressionally-directed spending, which are known more commonly as earmarks. Currently, we have just a few projects I want to highlight. There's a $500,000 feasibility study currently with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to address flooding issues. There is a $6.8 million request pending with the U.S. Department of Transportation to implement many of the projects prioritized in our Safe Streets action plan. We are working and in fact just had a short site tour of the location on the west side of town for a potential reconnecting communities grant. We have multiple public safety grant opportunities that Chief Collins has talked about with us, and we're prioritizing with the Department of Justice and the Federal Emergency Management Agency. And we are continuing to push the campus edge development and other projects through congressionally-directed spending. So, the work before us, while we're proud of the return on investment, the work before us is substantial. So, we appreciate the council's consideration of continued investment in us. We'll continue beating the drum for Natchitoches and D.C. and with other federal decision-makers. We'll continue to enjoy invitations to Christmas Fest and look forward to be back December. I'm happy to take any questions for the council members. If you have ideas or thoughts, projects or priorities you haven't heard specifically referenced that you'd like to highlight, happy to hear those, hear your inputs, or take any questions you might have.
Thank you, I've done an awesome job getting the grants so we were able to get so far. I really appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
You know, Merchant McIntyre, they've been really great and easy to work with. You know, very professional, just kind of know the lay of the land with these different agencies that we're working with, especially DOT, so I never forget the first win we got. We already had our call earlier that day, and then I called you all back. And, uh, but it was a really great feeling to get, to be informed that we had won a $17.2 million raise grant, which we're working on, Nick and I, we're soon we'll have a consultant on. So, but one thing Brent says often is, you know, how great his team is, but he often gives accolades to our team here. Of course, Nick Verrep, a city engineer, working really hard, Nicole Gray as well, on some grants that we have. And Brent, I don't know if you met Shauna LaBroom, she replaced Randy here recently, so we'll have her on those calls going forward as well. So, but it's just been really great. Back in, I think, March, April, I mean, we submitted like four or five different applications. We got AFG, that's really, really happy about that. Of course, I don't know if you mentioned the one small town with, uh, what you did, you just mentioned it, with the law enforcement. So, um, you know, that's gonna be really, really important to get. Hopefully, we'll get that for law enforcement, so.
I did not mention that one, but yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got more than I even recounted here in the update memo. The thing that I will remind folks here of, we have the benefit of having grown quite a bit over the last several years. It's exciting, but I think more critically for y'all is the fact that it does give us insight into maybe what other cities and other applicants to federal government, federal agencies are doing. It is uncommon to see a city invest the way y'all have. And so, I think it's important to remember that Natchitoches is competing at a national level for federal dollars, right? You win a grant, you're excited, we need to go win more, that's what we're charged to do. But just if you would, by way of leadership, Mr. Mayor, from you, through the staff, Nick, Nicole, others, you're able to compete at a national level. And not everybody is able to do that, not everybody is willing to do that. And so, I appreciate both the council, the entire team, for what they do to help us do what we do, and look forward to see y'all in December.
Yep, looking forward, we're praying for safe travels for you and Jane, getting back to D.C. And again, looking forward to hearing something about that Safe Streets for All. Hopefully, it's a really good one for us.
It'll be our first call.
Yep, thank you all for being here today.
Thank you.
All right, good to see you. Welcome to Natchitoches, Jane. And they've gotta go, they would stick around, but they've gotta go fly back to D.C. later on, okay? All right, now, next on the agenda, we have some special recognition. And you know, we do Employee of the Month that we focus on, our employees who do such a great job. Of course, they get paid to do a great job. But this month, we want to recognize an employee from the utility department. And I want to give Matt an opportunity to have some remarks before we bring up Mrs. LaCass.
I just want to say about Mike, you know, if you knew Mike, you loved him. He was just that kind of guy, just one of the hardest-working men I had ever met. When we have a storm come through, Mike was always the guy out there first. You know, even when he wasn't on call, he's willing to come out, answers his phone every time. And then when we had those big outages, Mike was the lead man. He was our lead lineman. And, you know, we miss him every day, just his work ethic. What else Mike would do, he would always take the younger guys under his wing. A lot of these, I guess, rough-and-tumble linemen, they don't like training the younger guys, but that Mike was always the one to train. And that was very apparent if you were at his memorial service, because all these younger guys that come and go, you know, as young people do, they were coming out of the woodwork. And, you know, a lot of them, I didn't even remember their names. You know, they were here such a short time, but Mike made an impact on their lives, so they all showed up for his memorial service, so. And in the past four or five years, Mike was our lead guy hanging the Christmas lights, you know, making those decisions of when we do this and when we do that. So, uh, we're gonna stumble through that this year without Mike, and it's gonna be tough. And we're gonna miss him during that time, too. But, you know, he made an impact on some of the guys that are still here, so he was just a, just a great guy.
Yep, um, you know, that's just what Matt said, is what he shared with me even a few weeks back, just how much of a hard worker Mike was for the city. And we saw it, too, even when he had become ill, he was still coming to work for the city.
Yes.
I know he's someone who loved his family, his wife and his sister are both here. I actually worked with his wife for a few years in Koshada as a teacher. And I was telling Matt, you know, we're so used to saying the last name, because you don't say a teacher's first name around a student. So, I just knew as Mrs. LaCass, but I know she loved Mike, and I know certainly her children do as well. So, we have a very small token we want to present to you, Mrs. LaCass, and even have Mike's sister come up as well. But it's just a certificate, certificate, excuse me, to acknowledge his service, or it says a certificate of distinguished service proudly presented in the memory of Mike LaCass for his nine years of dedicated service to the City of Natchitoches Utility Department on this 22nd, 26th day of August in the year 2024. So, we want y'all to come, come on, Matt, and we'll get a picture. And is that, Mr. LaCass, is there anything you would like to say? Okay, all right.
Mr. LaCass, how you doing? And I want to say I'm very sorry for your loss. I did not know that was your husband. I've worked with you, too. Very sorry for your loss. Keep you in my prayers.
Mike will certainly be sorely missed. Yep. Next, we've got a proclamation, we've got two proclamations, but the first one is read by Councilman P T.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 075 of 2024, a proclamation declaring September of 2024 as National Sickle Cell Awareness Month in the City of Natchitoches. Whereas September is National Sickle Cell Awareness Month, the observance passed by congressional resolution in 1983 was endorsed through presidential proclamation, which spoke to the national progress that had been made to diagnose and treat sickle cell disease. Whereas the proclamation also cited the success of comprehensive sickle cell centers across the United States in establishing programs of research, training, and community service to address sickle cell disease, a blood disorder causing abnormalities in hemoglobin, leading to the telltale sickle shape in sufferers' red blood cells. Whereas in the past decade, there has been substantial progress in research on sickle cell disease. Diagnostic procedures have been greatly improved. Measures to ameliorate excruciating painful sickle cell crisis have been introduced for those afflicted with the disease. Whereas sickle cell disease presents a grave health challenge for an estimated 100,000 Americans. For some, it triggers episodes of pain, difficulty with vision, and serious fatigue. Other survivors experience this disease more acutely. Sickle cell disease can cause infections, strokes, and even organ failure. Whereas for almost everyone impacted, coping with inherited red blood cell disorders means putting plans on pause, living with excruciating pain, paying for expensive treatments, and hoping for a day when medication and doctor visits no longer interrupt life. Whereas during National Sickle Cell Awareness Month, Correction Awareness Month, we recognize the perseverance of sickle cell disease patients, and we recommit to working with our partners in state and local government, the nonprofit space, and the private sector to develop treatments and cures for this debilitating disease. Whereas sickle cell disease affects our population unevenly. Black and brown Americans are disproportionately affected. About 1 in 13 black children test positive for sickle cell trait, and about 1 in 365 black Americans develop the disease over the course of their lifetime. Due to the persistent systematic inequalities in our healthcare system, these same patients are often, are also often the last to get help. Whereas as we continue to research to find a cure for sickle cell disease, let us celebrate the strides of our health experts, correction, that our health experts have made in understanding and treating this condition. Let us continue to offer support to those battling its effects today. May I also move to adopt resolution number 075?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, well-written proclamation. It is a debilitating disease, like many of these, all of these diseases. My hope is that, you know, research advances and we'll be able to ultimately have a cure is what we hope to do for these various diseases. But as you, Councilman P T, read, that this disease affects African-Americans, black and brown people in a disproportionate manner. I mean, I know folks who have been affected directly, and I'm sure many of you also know as well. So, I think this is certainly worthy to have on our agenda, but even find ways we could do more. So, we do have Mr. Carlton Johnson here today. I don't know, maybe he's gonna share with us some ways we could do more, whatever remarks he may have. Mr. Johnson, just state your first and last name, then you can get into whatever remarks you have. Thank you for being here today, sir.
Carlton Johnson II. To Mayor Williams and a member of the Natchitoches City Council, I am Carlton Johnson II, bosses of the Theta Delta Chapter of Omega Psi Phi Trinity Incorporated at Northwestern State University. Thank you again for proclaiming the month of September as Sickle Cell Anemia Month in Natchitoches as September is a national month for awareness. We enjoyed working last year with a detailed awareness concept in the city and at Northwestern regarding the sickle cell anemia disease. We're working with the Region 7 Sickle Cell Anemia Office in Shreveport. That includes Bowser, Benville, Claiborne, DeSoto, Lincoln, Jackson, Red River, Sabine, Webster, and Natchitoches parishes. Found mostly in African-Americans, sickle cell disease is an inherited blood disorder that causes the red blood cells to become sickle shaped, thus making them incapable of fully carrying oxygen throughout the body. It commonly causes debilitation of vital organs. It is life-threatening and incurable. Constantly working to help uplift our community, it is our intent to make residents and other fellow students aware of the disease and trait during the month of September and encourage medical examinations as research continues to better forms of treatment and on actual cure, and an actual cure. The local stats show that there are more than three dozen people in Natchitoches Parish living with the disease. We will announce very soon the date of our public awareness event. At the event, we will provide information about the disease itself and support, and support information. Again, thank you for this proclamation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson, for being here and reading those remarks. Uh, no, come on, come on, come on, Ms. Judith, you can come to the, go to the microphone, please. And state your first and last name, Ms. Hayes, and then get into whatever remarks you have, please.
Judith Hayes Walters. We're in, together with this last ti, last year, they helped us with this proclamation as well. So, we're together on the sickle cell anemia drive.
Okay, thank you all for pushing this out and keeping this at the forefront. And we're looking to hear about more events that you're gonna have planned so we can participate and as we try to march toward a cure, all right?
Mayor, if I may make a comment. With the sickle cell, I'm one that does have a trait, and it's just something that you never think about, you know, even in choosing like a life partner, that's a question that you have to ask the other person if they have a trait, you know? But also, too, I had a brother that passed back in 2016, where he died from complications of sickle cell. And I have a nephew now, he also has the disease as well, a landing. And so, you know, we see it firsthand with all the trips to the hospital and the crisis, you know, when they, you know, being in pain, just certain things that you gotta be mindful of. And, you know, even from a kid just, you know, want to get in the swimming pool and swim, well, he can't get in cold water, because that can cause him to have a crisis at times, you know? So, it just, you know, I appreciate, you know, having this on, and it's just something that's great to bring awareness to.
Thank you for sharing, sir. Thanks a lot for sharing.
Didn't know that.
Hopefully, find a cure.
Yeah, hopefully.
All right, again, thanks for all the remarks about this, on this topic. Did we have a motion?
We did, I seconded it.
Motion, motion made and seconded. Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Mr. Johnson and I guess Ms. Hayes as well, we want to get a, do we have the proclamation? Let us, let us get a picture with, with y'all as well. Come on, come on up here, we'll get a picture with you. Right, that's who we got? Ms. Hayes, you coming up, too? Yeah, come on up.
Of course.
We'll send a. All right, council, we do have another proclamation on, but for now, let us go to our ordinance is for final. Yeah, let's go to ordinance. Let's go to ordinance is for final, and this time, I'm gonna ask for public comments on ordinance number 20 of 2024, which is adopting the millage rate for the tax year 2024. If there are any public comments on this ordinance. Okay? Good, all right. Seeing no comments, Councilman Harrington is gonna read the ordinance.
This is ordinance 20 of 2024, an ordinance adopting the millage rate for the tax year 2024, and be. And be it ordained that the following millage are hereby levied in the two thousand twenty-four tax roll on all properties subject to taxation by the city of Natchitoches. Its public safety tax, nine point three five zero mills. General alimony tax, six point five seven zero mills. And the total mill is therefore is fifteen point nine two mills. And I move to adopt ordinance twenty of two thousand twenty-four.
I second.
Motion made in seconded. Clarissa, I think, did a perfect job in explaining this a couple of weeks ago. We're deciding not to roll forward at this particular time. Just feels like the right thing to do. We will have some opportunities in the coming three years, I think, to elect one of those years to roll forward. But it just feels best at this time to, I guess, keep the rates where they are, property rates where they are. Right?
Right.
Any comment or question about that?
Doing the right thing.
We did get a second. I got a second, okay. Motion made in seconded, Mrs. Stacy Rokal vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next, we've got an ordinance read by Councilwoman at large Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance number zero two one of two thousand and twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Natchitoches to award the bid for a bucket truck for the city of Natchitoches Utility Department. Whereas Resolution zero five zero of two thousand twenty-four was passed by the Natchitoches City Council on June twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four, authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for the bucket truck for the city of Natchitoches. Whereas the bid was advertised in the Natchitoches Times on June twenty-seventh, July fourth, and July eleventh in accordance with law. And the two bid proposals were received and open as follows. Global Rental Company, Inc., out of Birmingham, Alabama, two hundred twenty-three thousand dollars. Versa Lift, out of Waco, Texas, two hundred seventy thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars. And on August fifth, the committee composed of Clarissa Smith, Finance Director, Lee, Ed Lee, Director of Purchasing, Matt Anderson, Director of Utilities, and Eddie Harrington, councilmen received those bids for the bucket truck for the city of Natchitoches. And I move for adoption. And whereas this bid was, the lowest bidder was Global Rental Company in the amount of two hundred twenty-three thousand dollars. And I move for adoption of ordinance number two thou, zero two one, that'd be approved.
Second. Motion made in seconded. I think Matt did a perfect job a couple of weeks ago in explaining this one. I think, I remember you saying, Matt, that it just really didn't make any more sense to lease this bucket truck, and it makes better fiscal sense for us to go ahead and purchase.
Right, we're kind of getting away from leasing the trucks, so go ahead and purchase them.
Yep. Any comments or questions? Right? Seeing now, Mrs. Stacy Rokal vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries also. We've got three ordinances for introduction, the first of which is read by Councilwoman Washington Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero two two of two thousand twenty-four, and I'm just going to read the introduction on it because it's basically a lot of stuff that someone can explain more detail. Oh, you can, no. I'm going to just read the introduction of it. Ordinance number zero zero two of two thousand twenty-four. The ordinance approving the lease of a hundred and twenty-five acres trade of the Natchitoches Sewer Treatment Plant for hay operation with McNeil Cartel L L C authorized the mayor, Ronnie Williams, to execute said lease of behalf of the city of Natchitoches and to provide advertisement. And this is for introduction only. I'm not sure who department this.
Probably sound like Ed Lee. Ed, tell us a little bit.
Yeah, this is the lease at the sewer plant for the hay. It saves the city from having to use their labor and equipment maintaining the grounds on the sewer plant. McNeely, cattle, they have had the current lease, and they've been very good tenants out there. They, their low maintenance, they just take care of what needs to be done, and the city doesn't have to get involved with it and handhold them. So they've, they've been good tenants, and we, you know, they'd be great to renew this lease for us.
Okay. Yeah, we've had it. How long do you think?
This lease?
Yep.
I think it's the prior one, the expiring one, I believe, is a three-year lease.
Okay. But this same company has been doing it even, you know, years before.
And there was a time, Mayor, the sewer, the grounds in the sewer plant were not taken care of by prior tenants, not the city, but the prior renters. And they have come in here and taken good care of it and fertilized it and done some good things with it. And it's, it's been a very good lease.
Okay. Any questions you have, council, about this?
Looks like they're feeding some cattle on it too, so that's good.
I was about to ask, are they using it for anything? So he just said.
No animals are allowed on the property because there was a time when sometimes a neighboring farmer, we had cows get in the sewer plant, and we just don't need cows walking around all the equipment and.
No, but they get to eat the hay, don't they?
They roll the hay and then take the hay elsewhere. But yes, they get to eat the hay, just not on site.
But they're not on site, is what you're saying.
Okay. All righty, again, this is just for introduction. So council of questions arise. Matt can handle them or Ed. Next item for introduction is read by Councilman Harrington.
This is ordinance number twenty-three of two thousand twenty-four, an ordinance to amend and reenact Section eight dash four of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Natchitoches, which section provides for permit fees for permits for new construction, alteration, repair, and remodeling of structures in the city of Natchitoches, providing for advertising, further providing for severability, and further providing for repealer and effective date of ordinance. Whereas Chapter eight of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Natchitoches provides for the regulation of building, buildings and building regulations in the city of Natchitoches. And whereas further, Section eight point four of Chapter eight provides for permit fees for the issuance of permits for new construction, alteration, repair, and remodeling of structures in the city of Natchitoches. And whereas Sections eight dash four of the Code of Ordinances was amended by ordinance fifty-one of two thousand twenty-one, adopted by the council on October eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, the director of planning and zoning has now recommended that Section eight dash four be amended to provide for new schedule fees. And the ordinance goes in, breaks down exactly what Section eight point four states currently. And then whereas further, the city, city council of the city of Natchitoches is of the opinion that the changes to the schedule fees for building permits should be updated and recommended, as recommended by the director of planning and zoning. Then it breaks down what the new ordinance would state, which I think is, instead of me reading it all out and everyone going to sleep, we can just talk about it.
Okay. Now look, basically what this is, and thank you, Councilman Harrington. You know, we just want to make sure that we, the city of Natchitoches is competitive in terms of job growth, business attraction, business expansion within our city. So again, I think this is a great place to invest, to open a business, to do business in. So we just want to make sure that, you know, we're very, very competitive in that regard. It's just on for introduction at this point. So if you have any questions, we can attempt to answer those questions about this particular piece.
I don't have a question, but I think since we are being televised, or however you want to put it, maybe read A through H, at least letting people know what these fees will be. As, as far as B, there should be no fee for work less than one thousand dollars. Residential fees, seventy-five, one hundredths of one percent of the estimated cost of the project. Commercial, seventy-five, one hundredths of one percent of the estimated cost of projects. For alterations, repairs, remodeling, removal, demolition, the fees shall be fixed as graded, you know, as assessed. Residential shall be seventy-five, one hundredths of one percent of the estimated cost if you're building, you know, what that would cost. Commercial is also the same thing. And for swimming pools, those putting in swimming pools, the permit would be for the construction of the swimming pool. The fee should be ten cents per square foot. House, moving permit, move a house, the fee should be fifty dollars per section. Mobile homes permit for placing and locating of a mobile home, the fee should be fifty dollars. So I just want to express that. So people listening will know, everybody didn't read the paper, that what these fees will be if, in case they're looking to do some of these projects.
And I would say most of those areas are going to be unchanged. It's just your commercial permitting relative to what this ordinance is doing.
Yeah, the, I believe the only change, am I right? The only change is for the builds over two million dollars. Is that right, Shuntrelle?
That's correct.
Correct, over two million.
And so I made it where, where the mayor says we're more competitive is we discovered, we discovered that we were more expensive than a lot of surrounding cities and areas. And, and which was amazing is when that was brought to everyone's attention, y'all jumped on it quick. And here it is before us, right here to fix it. And so that's pretty impressive. I want to commend y'all for doing that.
We're not as high.
Well.
It's a good business-friendly move.
Yeah.
Well, we've got some other things we want to do and we want to be really thoughtful about. So, but certainly, you know, as we talked, Shuntrelle and I talked, Alex was involved, of course Dale as well was involved in the conversation. So it just makes sense for us to, to take this move. All right? Again, it's just being introduced at this time. So if there are any questions or concerns, please reach out before our meeting on the ninth is our next meeting. All right, next item is also introduction. So it's Councilwoman Washington Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance number zero two four of two thousand twenty-four. The ordinance amending two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget to reflect of additional revenues and expenditures. And this is for introduction only. I didn't have anything on the tablet, so I just read it from the paper. I'm not sure.
What's that? I'm sorry.
I didn't have anything.
Oh, okay, I got you, yeah, yeah. So what this is, y'all, this particular item is about amending, amending the budget to, basically for this year, to, I'm sorry, with that, okay? To give additional five thousand to FANA for their spay and neuter program, and to allocate twenty-five thousand to the homelessness coalition for this year, as funds are available this year. So there's no guarantee that we'll be able to do this every year or any other year going forward. But we did have some additional funds that were unexpected, came to us from the state. And we used, you remember, forty thousand of it for the transportation. And then, so twenty-five to homelessness, five, which we had the other five for FANA already. So there's a grand total of ten, but five from here. Is it going to be five from here? Is that right?
It's ten.
It's ten from here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got you. So ten from here. So we got a few thousand left that will do some things without of that one hundred thousand dollars. So if you have any comment or question, surely we'll allow those groups, FANA and Homelessness Coalition, to speak at our next meeting. But it's, it's for introduction and I, so council, I don't know if you've got any comments or questions.
I say, Mayor, this was a, a good thing to get that done with the homeless coalition. I know, and you all know too, as far as like, you know, seeing the different individuals around town, and, you know, a lot of people was asking questions, but just to try to, you know, just step up and do something on that end, I think that's great.
Well, and I will, since you mentioned that, again, both of these are worthy organizations, but you brought up the homelessness coalition. There is, you know, an opportunity to apply for a grant, Brittany McCoy, who's, I think she's going to be a part of the homeless team, homeless coalition team, but she was hired by Laura Lyles at the chamber. So they're actually applying for a grant that hopefully can.
Assist with funding.
Yeah, I don't exactly know what it is.
A building.
Yeah. Is it for a building? Is that what it is?
For a building.
So can use it, use it for the purchase of a sculpture? I'm sorry, a structure. A structure, not a sculpture, a structure. Okay, all right. But, but yeah, thank you for saying that. Any other comments here?
I think this is a, an issue that we have in town, and it's a good step forward to trying to pull it together to help them get where they're trying to go. Where we call it.
Right, got you.
And I think they both are, you know. We have, we, we all know homelessness affects all of us throughout the whole United States, all over. And it's very prevalent here. It's getting more prevalent here than other places for some reason. I don't know why. So I'm very happy to see that this will go to help those people in need and hopefully get a shelter for those people. And also, on behalf of FANA, you know, these are animals. They don't have a voice. So, you know, you have people working on their behalf also. So I think the city stepping up to help both of these organizations is a great thing, you know.
Yeah, I look forward to working with FANA as they grow. They're in the process of building a building as well. And the opportunities to join forces for animal control over the next three to five years are, I look forward to working with you guys.
All right, again, we'll have it on the agenda for a vote on our September night meeting. All right.
And just want to add, anyone want to work with the homeless coalition? They're looking for volunteers, so it's much needed.
We have a few resolutions. First one is Councilman P T.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number zero seven seven of two thousand twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Natchitoches, Ronnie Williams, Jr., to award a grant administration services contract and enter into an agreement with Frye McGee L L C for the South Natchitoches Drainage Improvements. Whereas the city of Natchitoches was conditionally awarded three million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars in Louisiana Watershed Initiative Round Two funding for planning and construction of a project known as South Natchitoches Drainage Improvements. Whereas the available funding includes the cost of grant administration services. Whereas the city of Natchitoches issued a request for proposals dated June fifth, two thousand twenty-four, to procure said grant administration services. Whereas only one response to this request for proposals was received. Whereas the Louisiana Office of Community Development directed that the request for proposals be re-advertised. Whereas upon re-advertising, one additional proposal was received. Whereas the requests for proposals contain detailed criteria by which submittals are to be evaluated. Whereas based on their evaluation, the review team recommends selection of Frye McGee L L C for these services. May I so move to adopt resolution number zero seven seven?
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Nick, you hear? Any comment outside of what was read by Councilman P T?
Good evening, Nick Barrett, city engineer. Just to comment that a few weeks ago, we were here asking for your authorization to award a contract for the engineering services for this particular project. This is now for the grant administration services that we'll need for this particular project. And again, these are the, the South Natchitoches Drainage Improvements would include improvements in the drainage along Fairgrounds Road, Industrial Drive, and in the Town South and Pan Am Subdivision areas.
Okay, all right, all right, good. Any questions for Nick? I know, so we advertised and had to re-advertise?
Yes. When we receive only one proposal, because this is being handled by the same group that does the C D B G projects, they do require re-advertising. And we were able to get a second proposal, and then we evaluated both based on the criteria that were in the R F P.
And these are in phases?
Actually, no, this project is. Uh, actually, no, this project is, uh, right now, it's in the hydraulic modeling stage. Uh, with the engineering now on board, there's some work that has to be done to finish the hydraulic model. Once that's done, it will enter into the design phase and then we'll get to construction after that. So, but really, the project is, is basically considered one phase, uh, there would just be different stages of that project.
Okay.
Okay.
Looking forward to it.
Yes, sir.
Getting it going. I know we get emails and calls from people in that area.
Yes, sir.
On a regular basis.
We, uh, the, the flooding that we experienced on July twenty-sixth, we hope that we'll be able to address with this project.
Okay. Good, good. All right, thanks a lot, Nick.
Yes, sir.
Any other comment? All right, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Uh, next item is a resolution read by Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. And may have a little lull. We're in a test mode for new computer system, Board Pro, but it's, I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah. We're gonna see if we're good.
Here, take mine.
We gotta learn. Okay.
It's coming up.
I got it. Resolution number seventy-eight of two thousand twenty-four is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number three for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four street rehabilitation project, bid number zero-six-six-three. Whereas the city of Nagadish awarded the bid to Regional Construction LLC on September twenty-five, two thousand twenty-three, but ordinance number fifty-six of two thousand twenty-three in the amount of eight hundred and two thousand, ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four street rehabilitation project. And whereas on November thirteen, two thousand twenty-three, the city council approved change order number one in the amount of eight thousand, three dollars and fifty cents, making the revised contract total eight hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and three dollars and forty cents. And whereas on January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, the city council approved change order number two in the amount of eighteen thousand, six hundred dollars, making the revised contract total eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and forty cents. And whereas on August fifteen, two thousand twenty-four, the city engineer, Nick Verrett, issued change order number three, fully described in attachment A. And whereas the contract sum will be decreased by this change order number three in the amount of sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. And the revised contract total will be seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and six cents. And whereas the city is of the opinion that change order number three is in the best interest of the city and now therefore be it resolved by the city of, council of the city of Nagadish in legal session convening at the Honorable Ronnie Williams, Jr., Mayor, being as hereby authorized, empowered and directed to execute the reference change order number three to the agreement between the city of Nagadish and Regional Construction LLC. And I move that we adopt resolution number seventy-eight of two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made in second.
And thank you, Nick.
Yeah. It's type of change order we like to...
Get some money back.
See, sixty-six thousand dollars. I think so.
Yes.
So, again, I know everybody loves to hear when that happens. We're so often here the other way where we have to pay more, but, um, so we're, um, it costs us sixty-six thousand less than we first thought it would. Is that how you say it?
Right.
Okay. All righty. Any, any comment about this resolution? All right, seeing now, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Uh, next resolution is read by Councilman Harrington.
Resolution seventy-nine of two thousand twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a certificate of substantial completion to the contract between the city of Nagadish and Regional Construction for the AG ramp slash wash rack at the Nagadish Regional Airport. Um, whereas a substantial completion inspection has been performed by KSA engineer Jonathan Farmer and a representative of the city of Nagadish, and they find the project to be complete. I move to adopt resolution seventy-nine of two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
All righty, motion made in second. Ed, I think you've spoken on this project before. Is there anything else that needs to be stated or you?
Yeah, the, the project's complete, the AG grant wash rack is in use. It was a good project funded by, um, I believe this was DOTD money.
Okay. DOTD.
Mm-hmm.
All right, good.
So we're, we're completed.
Fully DOTD.
Pardon me?
One hundred percent DOTD?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Eddie? Thanks for your speech.
What that means is that didn't, the city of Nagadish didn't have to pay a penny for it. That money was gonna go somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
People complain, hey, why are you spending that money here? That, the federal government was gonna pay that money to go somewhere. We got it.
Right, right, right. He's got it, he's got it.
There you go.
All righty. Any, any other comment about this particular resolution? All right, seeing now, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. All right, last resolution we have is read by Councilwoman Laura Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution number zero-eight-oh of two thousand twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Nagadish, Ronnie Williams, Jr., to execute amendment number one to the maintenance agreement, including mowing and litter pickup with the State of Louisiana Department of Transportation Development for additional state funds for maintenance of DOTD right-of-way statewide. Whereas the city approved resolution number zero-five-three of two thousand twenty-four on June twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four for the maintenance agreement, including mowing and litter pickup with the State of Louisiana, beginning July first, two thousand twenty-four through June thirty, two thousand twenty-five. And whereas further additional state funds have become available, available for maintenance of DOTD right-of-way statewide. And whereas DOTD proposes to make some of the funds available to the city of Nagadish to offset in part one additional maintenance cycle completed by the city of Nagadish during fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. Whereas the city of Nagadish desires to accept the offer to make the supplement of funding available to the city and agrees to perform one additional maintenance cycle to remove litter and mow vegetation on certain state right-of-way within the jurisdiction of the city. Oh, it's not too fast. And whereas, um, the city of Nagadish has reviewed and approved the attached amendment number one. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Nagadish, uh, that the mayor of Nagadish, Ronnie Williams, Jr., is hereby authorized to execute the attached amendment number one, which is, uh, the agreement amendment of the reference agreement to increase the stipulated minimum, minimum number of maintenance cycles in fiscal year two thousand twenty-five from four to five. And I move for adoption of resolution number zero-eight-oh of two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made in second, seconded. This allows us an additional cut. Is that right, Donald?
Yes.
We're getting one additional cut from DOTD. Or we, we're cutting it or?
Yeah, we cutting it, but DOTD is paying us an addition of seven thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars.
I got you. Okay. So they giving us...
We was getting twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty, so we getting an extra seven thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars for that one cut extra.
Got you. Got you, okay. All right, but hey, we'll take it.
How much you paying? I'm sorry, missed that.
How much, is this one worth?
Yeah.
What you talking about, the one cut?
Did you say seven thousand?
Yes, seven thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars, that's what they paying additional. We was getting twenty-nine, two hundred and eighty.
So they're making thirty-six something or?
Yeah, making thirty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay.
So that's what we...
You know why that is or why they gave us an additional cut? I'm happy that they did, but curious.
Well, I think, you know, a lot of times, I guess when they, uh, Jerel was talking, when they get the extra money and they have it and they have it available, they kind of distribute it out, you know, to help us, 'cause they know we cutting it more than what we normally, they would cut it.
Okay.
So they just trying to help us out.
And it's just on the state highway area, right? Just state highway.
State routes.
State right-of-way, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, well, yeah, we're not gonna turn this down, I don't think we are, huh, council? All right. Any, any comment about this particular resolution?
Explain the city.
All right, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Now we're gonna turn our attention to, uh, Mrs. Clarissa Brown Smith for the monthly financial report.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so quickly, we'll go through some, uh, sales tax stats. So, um, I'm not sure if we have the visuals on that, but I'll try to explain as much as possible. So year-to-date, um, the city of Nagadish, um, has brought in eight million dollars in sales taxes. So, um, the graph actually shows, it's a little pie chart, I don't know if they have that, um, image, but...
Is there another one?
Um, is there one before that? It's okay if it's not, but it just kind of shows our piece of the pie. Um, and we've collected, uh, eight million and the actual total collection is about twenty...
Which one you want?
The first one. Mm-hmm. The total collection is about twenty-two million and, you know, it's split amongst the three entities, uh, city of Nagadish, the parish, and then also the school board. So our portion of that is eight million. Um, the bar graph that you'll see there just shows, um, sales tax collections over the last four years, including two thousand twenty-four. Uh, you can see that, uh, two thousand twenty-four actually exceeds, uh, the previous three years, which means that we're trending in the proper direction. Um, right now, we are again at eight million, uh, a hundred and thirty thousand above last year, uh, which gives us a one point six-five percent increase, uh, over last year. Uh, the next graph just kind of shows you month by month, uh, how we size up over the last, uh, three years. As you can see, if you look to your right, uh, that'll be July, which that's what our, uh, most recent figures are representing. And slightly under, uh, two thousand twenty-four, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-three, when you're just looking at the month of July, um, we were at one point one million, so we were at twenty-six thousand below last July. So not, not a huge difference, um, maybe a two percent difference there. So no, nothing big or alarming, but definitely want to keep an eye on that. Uh, if you look at the previous, um, six months, you can see that for the most part, we trended right at the previous two years or above. So, um, we'll just keep a close eye on that. The year-to-date, being that our fiscal year, uh, fiscal year starts in June, we show that representation as well. That, um, graph to your left will show how we fared. Uh, we are slightly under for the new fiscal year of about eighty-four thousand. Um, so we'll kind of take a look at that and make sure that we, um, keep a close eye on that and, uh, watch the trends there. But this just shows our actual fiscal year activity. Uh, this is, that first one is the sales tax collections and the second one is the sales tax distribution. So you just see both of those side by side. Um, the next graph, and sorry if I'm moving too fast, definitely ask questions if you have them. The next, uh, um, chart, I know it's small, you can't really read it from the screen. Uh, council, you should have a copy, but it just shows some of our TIF district activity. Uh, the first set shows our, um, hotel occupancy, two percent tax and how it's, uh, faring. We're slightly down at three percent. We have total collections, uh, year-to-date at thirty-five thousand, so we're slightly below, uh, the same time last year of about three percent. And that's just something that we do see a low July. If you look at, um, over the last two years, you can look to see that we do see a low July. The, not a specific reason there, but of course we'll see an uptick as we go into our festival and holiday season. So that's usually where we recoup that and come out ahead. So we'll continue to watch that as well. Uh, TFC, uh, we are slightly down, um, point zero-seven percent, so not even one percent down, but we'll definitely, again, keep a close eye on that to make sure that we're trending properly and just looking to anticipate a high holiday season when it comes to our TIF taxes. The next screen, again, apologize for the size, um, but this just shows our economic development districts, uh, well, a few of those. So we, uh, see economic development district A, um, and we are trending at fifty percent above last year. So that economic development district is doing really, really well. Um, so we're, we're happy to see those numbers. Uh, economic development district C, we're seeing that it's only trending down point zero-six percent. So again, not a large, uh, difference there. So we'll just keep a close eye on that, but definitely economic development district A is doing really well. And, uh, it does show economic development district F as well. And the reason why I point that out is that's our latest one. Um, so we can see that we are at, uh, twenty thousand and that's, that's our latest one, so we don't have a, any comparative data, but, uh, to see that number, um, is surprising, but that is definitely exciting, um, that we can see that type of activity in such a small, uh, economic development district and not having many businesses in that area, uh, right now. I know we have great, you know, expectations for the future of that area, but just to see that now, it's, means that they're doing really well.
Well, and so F, we know is Mills.
Yes.
It's the Mill district.
Is the Mill district.
Flying hard in Riverside.
Yes, sir.
What was A? Do, do you know what A?
Uh, yes.
I have trouble remembering which one is...
No, so, uh, A is in, it's not Front Street, but it's everything behind. So it's not Front Street, but it's everything running behind. C is your I forty-nine, um, area. So that's why you see larger number there. You don't see a, a huge number, um, in academic, uh, economic development district A, but that's everything, it's not Front Street, but it's everything, um, behind. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, everything behind this way. Yeah, second, third, yeah, all those areas.
Not Texas.
No, it's not Texas.
Okay.
What was Mill?
Mill district. F. Mm-hmm.
Now, on, on the city, um, what's it, city sales tax, I think that's what, yeah, sales tax. I know we've lost some businesses too, so would that decline be due to some of the businesses that have closed?
Well, we probably haven't seen the impact of that just yet, um, 'cause the larger businesses, to say for instance, like a Big Lots or something like that, they haven't actually closed completely. Uh, we have some smaller restaurants closing, you don't really see just a hard hit because honestly their business probably have been trending downward. So unless you see this, you know, this thriving business close all of a sudden, you know, that's alarming, but these organizations more than likely have been trending downward, so we haven't just seen a huge decrease. So, and that's actually a good thing. I mean, it's not good that they're closing, but it's good that they haven't had such a detrimental impact on your sales tax. Um, so, uh, we may see a decline, um, in the coming month, um, just because you have a larger, uh, business closing, we'll keep an eye on that, but nothing that we know at this point.
How often do they do the auto, pull the auto sales tax?
Auto sales tax?
As a category?
They do it every month, whether or not it's included in our report. There are specific things that are of high interest. Um, I can definitely go back and, they can provide that to me at any time, but they push out a report with some of the more high-interest, um, areas of sales tax in our community, so, uh, but I can always go back and...
I was just curious, now that we kind of have the auto mall thing going on...
Right, right.
Whether it was impactful or it's not, uh...
Got you. Gotcha, and I can definitely go back and, and collect some of that information, since we, and that's a good point, we do have those, uh, newer, um, auto malls coming in, so, yeah.
And they're exempt from the TIF zone, correct?
TIF zone, um, that's a good question, I can't answer that question if they're actually exempt. That would be a question that...
I think they were held out of it, I don't know why.
I can definitely check into, no, 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 that's okay, I can definitely check into that, though.
Just curious.
Whether or not, I could tell you one interesting fact, and I don't have it in front of me, but, um, they are doing a wonderful job on online sale collections. That number has jumped dramatically.
That could be part of the increase.
So, yeah, so, um, they have definitely done a lot of work on getting that on track and, and collecting at a high level, so... And that's one thing that we talked about at our last meeting, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I know one area we might see, um, obviously, moving day, and Northwestern's always a big day for us. Especially Walmart. So if you go to Walmart on moving day, you say...
I went to Walmart on moving day.
Yeah, so I know...
Yeah, we got our, we got our college students back in town, so that's always a, a great thing to have.
Happy to have y'all back.
Yes, we are.
All right, thank you, uh, Mrs. Brown Smith for that report. And certainly, council, ask her any question, uh, that you, uh, feel you need to, uh, to ask her, okay? All right, we've got a few announcements. Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Do we have everybody here? I see Ms., uh, you're right, the Meat Pie Festival. That's you, Ms. Rachael, back there?
She got meat pies for us.
Okay.
Ms. Tina Rachael.
Okay, okay, well, look, I was told we were waiting on Mr. Jimmy.
Oh, Mr. Jimmy's not coming?
Okay, well, look, I could have let you go early, I'm sorry. I apologize to you, that's what somebody told me.
Saving the best for last, the meat pies.
All right, so look, here's what we got. We've got, um, Councilman Nelson. We have a proclamation, and again, I thought we were waiting on Mr. Jimmy to come, I was expecting him to make a grand entrance. But, uh, Councilman Nelson's got a proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor, it's certainly my pleasure. Proclamation, whereas records show that the concept of the meat pie took shape in the mid seventeen hundreds in Louisiana by Native Americans and later enhanced by the Spanish. And whereas fifty-six years ago, James Lazion opened his Meat Pie Kitchen, which is still in operation today in historic downtown Nacogdoches. And whereas, the recipe of the meat pie has changed slightly from its inception and has been handed down from generation to generation. However, the basic ingredients and the process for creating a meat pie remain the same. And whereas, with an abundance of excitement in two thousand two, the Nacogdoches Meat Pie Festival was formed to celebrate the noted culinary staple in Nacogdoches, Louisiana. And whereas, in two thousand three, the Nacogdoches Meat Pie was named Louisiana's official meat pie. And Nacogdoches was one of the last cities to not have an identified food festival until two thousand two. And whereas, the annual festival attracts visitors from throughout the state and over a dozen of other states as well each year. And whereas, the festival has always been a family-oriented, non-admission required event over a two-day period in downtown Nacogdoches, helping to enhance the area's economy with individual activities that can be enjoyed at a small fee. And whereas, the organizing committee for the festival is a complete volunteer committee. And whereas, the Nacogdoches Meat Pie Festival is returning by popular demand after a two-year break due to the novel coronavirus. Now, therefore, I, Ronnie Williams, Jr., Mayor, and the Nacogdoches City Council do hereby proclaim September thirteenth and fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, as Nacogdoches Meat Pie Festival Day in the city of Nacogdoches, and invite all residents to participate and enjoy the two-day festival that will include various bands, fireworks, vendors, children's performances and play area, and a how-to workshop, and will encompass this year's celebration. And I move that we adopt proclamation... Number seventy-six of two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded, Ms. Rachael, you're here, I'll see Mr. James Wilson as well. Gonna ask you to state your first and last name, and then whatever remarks you want to share with us tonight.
My name is Justina Rachael, and I am with the Meat Pie Festival. I'm gonna recognize you, Mayor, and the members of the council. Thank you, Mr. Nelson, for that, you take everything out of my mouth, I don't have anything to say. Except ours is the only free festival in, in the state. We put live music...
In the whole state?
Well, in Nacogdoches, well, of course.
Okay, that's, that's, look, that's amazing. I'm sorry to cut you off, but I...
Everybody has to pay for everything. Ours is absolutely free, we have free entertainment, entertained for the kids, free ride, you don't have to pay for your rides and your food and everything. But ours is completely free, we have live music and entertainment, and we... It's just about four of us that put this festival on, just four of us. And we rely, we rely on contributions, donations, and all that stuff, because we don't have, and what we do with our money is completely goes to charity. We also give Christmas gift to all the nursing homes and everything, so, that's what we do. And I also brought some meat pies for you guys, but I think they've gotten a little cold since I've been here since five thirty. You have anything to say, Miss?
Yes, uh, my, my friend, Mr. Ralph Wilson, asked me to be here.
State your name.
Uh, my name is James Wilson. Um, my friend, Mr. Ralph Wilson, asked me to be here to announce that, uh, this year, we're going to have a poster contest open to grades three through eight, uh, for students to participate from around the parish. Um, he's organizing that, uh, with the, with the school board, and, uh, there'll be trophies for, for second and third place.
That's great, that's great.
That's awesome. Look, and these smell really, really awesome. I wish you'd let me take the whole pan home. I got four kids at the house.
Tina.
But look, let us...
Tina, can we get a picture with everybody holding the meat pie?
Yeah, yeah, before we do that...
Holding a meat pie.
You've got... Look, and I, I just want to say, I think it's real awesome that you all still don't charge admission. The high cost, the high inflation has kind of, you know, affected everybody, and you all are still doing this. So we, kudos to you all for putting this together and still holding firm to that original principle. So we've got a motion and a second?
Yeah.
Um, at this time, Mrs. Stacy Rollcall vote?
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. I think he, he wants everybody with a meat pie in the hand, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we need to make this proclamation, and every meat pie should bring a meat pie.
Comment.
All right, we have a few announcements, and then we'll adjourn the meeting.
Um...
Mayor, if you would, I'd like to say something, please.
What's that?
Yeah, this is a letter I would like to, uh, to read, please. To the mayor, in reference to the progress report on, on repairing of street lights, I want to please ask that the city council at its November twelfth meeting provide me with an aura and a written report on repairing of street lights on Tammy Lane, Paula Lane, Parkway Drive, and North Melrose Avenue. Those areas are very dark, and we, we really need street lights over those areas. I've been contacted by people in that area, and, um, it's dark over there. We've, I've called this, um...
She, will you talk to Matt?
Several times, and nothing is being done. So I'm requesting that this item be placed on the agenda of the November twelfth meeting and that, uh, progress report be given, uh, back at that time as to, uh, the progress that's being made on the repairing of street lights in that area. Thank you.
Matt and I, we'll, we'll discuss, Matt, you and me, okay? All right, uh, we've got just a few announcements, and, uh...
I give it to Stacy.
We always announce, um, regroup, we encourage people to do it. Again, thankfully, we haven't had, uh, any major, uh, issue, hurricane, natural disaster, where we had to use it. We do use it, as I say, for street closures and, um, you know, things of that nature, um, that happen to go on in the city on a daily basis, so, but we always encourage. And, uh, we want to be more, kind of, get that more, get out there a little better. Download the Go Nacogdoches app, this is the fall season, uh, coming up, and we know, we, we're really kicking off, right, Chief Collins, this weekend with the Zadiko Fest. We're gonna, uh, have an announcement for that in just a minute, but we have a lot of festivals that just kind of come back to back to back. Zadiko, Meat Pie, Car Show, I mean, you got all kind of things happening, so, download that Go Nacogdoches app. All right, I think we've got a few more. The I Tribe, um, this is the third annual, they have three remarkable individuals that they're honoring, uh, this year. Mr. Claude Benjamin, Mr. Rebecca Blankenbaker, and that's Ms. Connie Baker, is that right?
Yeah.
Ms. Connie Baker, okay, I know you know, uh, P T. So again, this is a really good one, it's at the Riverside Reserve. So, um, so it's at five thirty this, this, uh, coming Thursday, okay? Yep, all right, uh, this Friday, uh, we are having, uh, the ceremony. We did the resolution back in the spring for the ceremony to... And this is not renaming the building at all, this is giving the gym a name, if you will. So, uh, we've got a name for that, uh, gym. So again, Friday at four o'clock, this coming Friday, uh, inviting you all to come out to that. So it'll be a sweet program, short, short and sweet, but I think still a, a pretty good program, okay? All right, we mentioned just earlier, uh, we've got the, uh, Zadiko Festival and Poker Run. Uh, food, music, and fun. Um, they do have admission, but I think it'll be, uh, worth it. I know they've got Marcus Ottawa, do you have Little Nate coming too? Is that right?
Yes, sir, Little Nate will be there, and they'll have a DJ. Uh, they have a poker run that they do during the day. Of course, it starts on Friday, so that evening, they'll have a dance contest and other live entertainment. And they have, uh, various vendors that are coming down, uh, selling wares, and we're trying to get a bouncy house, I think that might be of...
That'd be, that'd be great.
It's still up in the air, I think there was some, a loss of a member of the family, but we're, we're trying to work some things out, but we encourage everyone to come down. Our proceeds help benefit for the events we have, like Shop With A Cop, the Thanksgiving baskets that we give out each and every year, and, um, a lot of the other community-related events that we do. So that's our main funding source.
Okay, good, really good, all right. And so this is, um, ninety-five, twenty-five years, all right, awesome, awesome. All right, um, we announced this the last time, I think it's a really, uh, a good event at, uh, Fort, uh, Fort St. John Baptiste. Uh, this is happening on September the twenty-fourth, and just really gets you, uh, to close up with the Renaissance period. So, um, if you're kind of a history person like I am, you know, Renaissance is certainly, um, a, an important time in history, so... Um, looking forward to seeing this. And we've got a couple more announcements. What is this one? Join us in September for a, how you say that? Sasquatchin', 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 good time, all right? So look, this is the, this, oh, I better not say what, what's up there, somebody will correct me later. But this is the inaugural, inaugural Nacogdoches, Louisiana Bigfoot Festival. So y'all, that's a new festival thrown in on us, all right? We've had some talk about this, um, I don't know, they said they're gonna have a lot of swag, cool prices, I'm seeing. So look, this is, this is the first one, so looking forward to it. So Bigfoot Sasquatch, all right? Okay. All right, the Meat Pie Festival, free admission, September thirteenth, fourteen. Like I said, those events start to hit you back to back to back. Um, great music, I know you have several different meat pies by different vendors. Lot of vendors with meat pies. Look, one of the things we noticed, um, you know, this is one of those festivals happening in Nacogdoches. My wife and I, we were on the bridge one day, and I just remember so many vendors, so many little gadgets and kid, things for the kids to do, so... So really, really, really good, and, uh, so again, we're looking forward to all of these festivals, but we're looking forward to this one as well. All right, is there any other announcement, Steve? All right, the Kiwanis, this is one we announce, uh, we announce every year, so, uh, their Five Color Run and Pancake Fest. Um, you know, so this is gonna take place September twenty-eighth on Saturday, and, uh, starts at eight AM, and it's gonna be at the NSU Colons Pavilion on campus. The pavilion is situated in between Prentice Coliseum and, um, you know, the football stadium. That's it, all right, so we got a lot of announcements, there are many more, uh, coming even, uh, beyond that. At this time, we're here, motion to adjourn.
I think Nacogdoches is doing a great job of putting on activities here. People always saying there's nothing to do, nowhere to go, but there's a lot of things going on in Nacogdoches.
Lot of festivals, that's right. Especially in the fall, when the weather kind of cooled down a little bit. And that could kind of attribute to, you know, you see the sales tax dip in, in your summer months, that's really, it's so hot, you know, really, to be honest. So now we have people coming, um, and so we look for things to be, uh, certainly better, okay? We're here, motion to adjourn.
So move, we join?
All right, motion's made, and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.